Hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmet Public School District 39, this Monday, April 23, 2018. We are in the McHaleian Education Center in Willmet, Illinois. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
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 Thank you. And Principal Cindy Anderson will introduce the Ramona Early Childhood Students to lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. Face this way, Noel. Tonight, we brought our early childhood students for two reasons. Come on in. We have two things that we're celebrating. One, first, I'd like to thank Julie Pease for all of her tireless work with her early childhood program. She's retiring this year, and she's a very special part of our program. Ms. Julie is someone very special in all of our hearts. And the other thing is, we have our egg and chick study going on right now. And this week, the eggs are hatching. So we are very excited at Ramona. And so I'm going to have all of these special people introduce themselves. What's your name?
Jane.
What's your name?
Jane.
What's your name?
Michael.
Victor.
What's your name?
Willie.
Bobby Hasen.
Angus.
Henry.
All right. Good job.
What's your name?
Iowa.
And what else do you want to say?
Please stand for the pledge.
Please stand for the pledge. All right. One, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Great job, guys.
Thank you, boys and girls. You did a wonderful job. And that will be the highlight of our meeting for most of us. Thank you so much. All right. That was wonderful. We also have artwork on display this month from Ramona. It's from Emily Stevenson's Ramona Students, first graders, studied Vincent van Gogh's famous painting, The Starry Night, one of my favorite. Oh, I think that's on this side. And they created their own versions using paint blending, three-dimensional drawing strategies. And they formed villages in oil pastels to create swirling, sparkling night skies. Third graders investigated the flower paintings of Georgia O'Keeffe. They observed her style of painting objects from unique perspectives. Students zoomed in on images of flowers with special attention to line, shape, and color blending, right here. Second grade art students studied the work of Henri Matisse. They created goldfish bowl collages by applying layers of painted paper, vibrant colors and vivid patterns, as you can see here. And fourth grade artists created a series of prints featuring radial symmetry. Each student drew one-fourth of a unique pattern on a foam printing plate. They inked and printed their pattern multiple times while rotating their plate on a painted background, which revealed a luminous radial structure, as you can see over there. And I welcome you all to come up after the meeting and check them out more closely. These are really beautiful works of art, as we have each month. And then, at the start of every meeting, I make an announcement, and I will do the same this time. I would like to remind everyone that this is a public meeting. We are all among neighbors and fellow residents. We ask appropriate conduct. It's expected from everyone. We ask that people speak only when called upon, that everyone treat each other kindly and with proper respect, and refrain from distracting behaviors such as loud conversations, cheering, clapping, or booing. Thank you very much. And with that, I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the March 19, 2018, regular and executive session meetings, excuse me, and the minutes of the April 10, 2018, special meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the March 19, 2018, regular and executive session meetings, and the minutes of the April 10, 2018, special meeting.
Motion has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made. And seconded, board members, are there any comments, errors, omissions to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as they are submitted, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Okay, the motion carries by general consent. And this brings us to our first opportunity for public comments. If anyone in the audience would like to address the board at this time, please rise and come forward to the podium. Is anybody at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. That takes us to our board reports. The first board committee report is on school finance, and that is Mr. Penzica.
The Finance Committee met as part of the Committee of the Whole on April 9 at the McHaleian Education Center. The first topic was operating funds, tentative budget. Over the course of the year, we cover various drafts of the budget for each account in preparation for the approval of the final budget in August. The committee discussed the level of detail to be presented and the timing of various iterations of these reports. We discussed next year, starting with a review of all funds as an overview. One item that was presented and highlighted was the slight decrease in bus revenue. Last year, we discussed how elastic the bus ridership numbers were relative to price. We are beginning to get a feel for this with this first year of numbers. The second topic was an expenditure review. We're in the process of reviewing each area of expense to identify potential opportunities for cost savings. This month, we discussed four special ed-related services. While we are looking at all areas, this is not an area where we are anticipating any changes at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Penzica. The next board report is from the Strategy Committee, and I will take that one. We had actually two major topics in our last strategy meeting, which was also on April 9. They were instrumental music and kindergarten enrichment. In fact, we have reports on both of these tonight, so I will be brief in my review. What I would highlight from the instrumental music is that the district is recommending that we have a different sectional structure next year, an eight-day rotation rather than a five-day rotation. This will reduce the number of times that students are pulled from classes for sectionals. And the administration also indicated there would be a hard stop in regard to the number of classes for each subject that a student could miss per year for sectionals. So those are two changes recommended. And then, also, Ms. Lee pointed out that we are going into the second phase of reviewing our instrumental music program. We will do, or are at least planning, another survey. And we are looking at offering other musical experiences, such as access to other instruments, perhaps keyboarding, or other non-band or orchestra instruments. So look for that to develop over time. Our second subject in the strategy meeting was kindergarten enrichment. And we will have a comprehensive report on that tonight, on various options that we are considering. I think lots of people will be interested. So I will skip over the review for that, and you will hear about it in the larger report. And that is our Strategy Committee report. The next is, we had a Committee of the Whole meeting for the superintendent search, which is now going on. And Ms. Schneider-Fabeau, I believe you have an update for us on that. I hope so.
Absolutely.
Wonderful.
Now. Oh, got it. So we did interview three firms last week. We have unanimously moved to move forward to contract with those, and we are undergoing contract discussions with the firm right now.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So that process is moving forward nicely. We are now moving to our liaison reports, and the first is from Mr. Cesar Eddy with the Community Review Committee, CRC report.
All right. I attended, on behalf of the board, the CRC meeting on April 9. And I think, for those who don't know what the CRC has been up to, they are looking at personalized learning. And I think they've made quite a bit of progress. I think they're near the end and are real close to bringing forth recommendations. So I'm looking forward to seeing that soon.
Great. Thank you very much. And the other liaison report is the Education Foundation and Mr. Penzica. I believe you have that.
I actually do, too.
Okay. Okay, let's have Mr. Penzica go, and then you...
The Educational Foundation met Wednesday, April 18, at the McHaleian Center. They highlighted their successful April 15 fundraiser, and it was not tied to taxes. They hosted a showing of The Princess Bride movie. It was very successful and interesting fundraising that they enjoyed quite a bit. They also had a demonstration of one of their GRIP grant recipients. They brought multiple lock boxes to the meeting. And the members of the Educational Foundation spent time trying to break into the lock boxes. None of them succeeded in the time allowed. But they all were able to really get a much better idea of how, not only was it a fun exercise, but it really supported the 20th century skills, in particular collaboration, working together. So that was a very successful demonstration of how the GRIP grant awards can lead to new advancements. Their next meeting is May 16.
Great. Thank you. And then, Ms. Kearney, why don't you give us the GRIP grants, and then go ahead with the legislative update as well?
Perfect. Sorry about that. Yeah, I know they had two meetings within one, and I know I have to announce the GRIP grants that were granted. Anyway, I need glasses. I was fortunate enough to attend the Education Foundation's March 20 meeting, where they approved two incredible GRIP grants, and then some. The first one, Dr. Peter Ower, applied for was four Moda Cam's. And Moda Cam's are cameras that can be attached to current microscopes that the district has to enhance 7th grade science curriculum. These cameras will allow for the children to see things better, obviously, and capture. So anyway, Mr. Ower, the original grant, or I'm sorry, Dr. Ower, that changed since I had him, and I was trying to be correct about it. Yes, Dr. Ower, who is well-deserved of his doctorship. He originally applied for four Moda Cam's. And as a result of how well the grant was written, and how well it aligned with the Education Foundation's mission, the committee wholeheartedly granted him instead of four, and he had picked four in the first, because there's four different teams of science, so they could each be in one. The committee granted 24. So all kids could have access to this at all times. So the original ask was for $1,564, and the committee was happy to grant $9,384. The second grant was from Ms. Clark, and she applied for six Raspberry Pi boards. And don't quote me on this, but from what I understand, Raspberry Pi, she teaches the, what's the class called? Thank you. Computational Thinking. I was going to say Communication Thinking. I knew that wasn't right. Computational Thinking class. And she's found that when the kids come to class, everyone's at very differentiated levels, because it's primarily a coding class. And therefore, the kids who have been exposed to it have found, you know, she found that they were slightly bored, for lack of a better word. Anyway, she applied for six Raspberry Pi boards that can be used with Scratch, which is the technology they're using or learning. And that will enhance a child's experience, who does have more, who has been introduced to these concepts further. So it's an excellent grant, and it applied to all children. And again, because it was so well-written, and such, so well-matched, and really tailored to the Foundation's mission, they granted 12. So I can't say it better than Tracy Peacock, who's the GRIP Grant Chair. She said it perfectly. She's like, we just looked at these grants, written so well, we had the funds to do it, and we just really respected the fact that the teachers went out of their way to write them so well, and at the same time, show the respect for not asking for the world, et cetera. But she, how'd she put it? She said, we'd rather, while we were seeing little packets of innovation, we wanted to make it fully operational for all the children. So anyway, wonderful meeting. Thank you.
And do you want to do legislative?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Legislative report. While the Senate and the House, the legislature's been back in session since April 9, and they've been working very hard, and there's millions of bills in front of them. And I apologize in advance. I had to talk to Dr. Lechner to confirm that I wasn't reading anything wrong, that nothing has happened. And nothing really has, other than, there's a lot of bills in committee right now, coming out of committee. The deadline to come out of committee is April 27. So we should hear a lot after that. The highlights, though, as far as education, bills that are being considered in committee, and passed or not passed, going onto the floor, are to address teacher shortages. There's a teacher shortage in Illinois. School safety's a big topic. And then mandates, and many of them are unfunded. So pay attention to that, but I should have a much better report after April 27. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And that takes us to our information items, excuse me. Written communications. Dr. Lechner.
Yes, the board received written communication from Rokel Kilbinoff regarding the band orchestra survey and changes to the band orchestra program.
And then administrative announcements.
And as we do at this time of the year, this month, and next month, we have a lot of student recognition. We're going to start. I'm inviting our principal, Kelly Jackson, to the podium, and we're going to announce the winners of various events.
Good evening. This is such a fun time for us to be able to recognize a lot of our student leaders across the 5-8 campus. Specifically, tonight, we'll be recognizing students from our wrestling team, and also students who have placed in writing contests, as well as our Kurt Ammon team. So I'm going to ask Coach Levy to come on up, and Jack come on up. And Coach is going to talk a little bit about wrestling this year.
Okay. Hello. I'm Dan Levy. I'm the wrestling coach here. I'm Ms. Kearney. Where's Jack? Jack was a state champion this year for the Illinois Elementary School Association. He is our first state champion here at Willmet Junior High, a program of 10 years that... Jack is just an example of the kind of kid that we try and produce. He's the first one to climb the highest step. And he made it difficult. His first match down at state, with 15 seconds to go, we were down by one, or he was down by one. And he knew what he had to do and accomplished it. And we have a little plaque to give him, just to remember what he accomplished, and to always know where he's home. And it's been a pleasure to coach him. He's a fine young man, that anybody would be proud of, in the school, the district, his community, things that we talk about in practice. He's a fine representation. He represented himself and everyone admirably. So thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Coach Levy. Next, I have our 7th and 8th graders, who participate in writing challenges throughout the school year, because they love to write and to share their ideas with others. Our Daughters of the American Revolution participants took on the challenge of reflecting on life in 1918, as Americans were adjusting to the life ahead of them at the end of World War I. We had two groups of winners. The winners for the contest from 7th grade were Annie Von Dolan, who took first place. Alexander Achimovic, who took second place for 7th grade. And Olivia Babaleo, who is not here this evening, but she took third place for 7th grade. Our 8th grade winners were Jaya Rohit Nambiar for first place. Samuel Roberts, who took second place. And Casey Bertocci, who took third place. Those students who participated in the Mental Health America essay contest talked about confidence and self-esteem, two ideas that are vital to the success of any teenager. And one of our WJHS 7th graders, Annie Von Dolan, took third place in the contest. And he's also up here for the DAR contest. Our thanks to the teachers, specifically Ms. Lebowski and Mrs. Schwartz, who really helped these kids to look over their essays, as well as their classroom teachers, who helped also with editing and revising. Parents, administrators, and contest organizers who supported our kids in these contests. Thank you for the kids, also for sharing their talents Thank you, writers. Now I'm going to give the microphone to Ms. McGistra Shoemaker, who's going to tell us a little bit about our Kurt Ammon team.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Kelly Shoemaker, the Latin teacher at Willmet Junior High. And this year, our Kurt Ammon team took first in state, which is exceptional. I have three of our four-member final team, if you guys could come up here, since you're hiding. So our whole team has 17 members on it, and we work toward amassing a great number of points. We can only, however, take four people to states. So we have Grace Yu here, who is our mythological expert. And we have Eric Aray Zhou, who is, was our loose cannon, general knowledge, very good at the buzzing, sometimes a little too good at the buzzing. And then, we have our team captain, Isaac Downs, our master of all general knowledge. And he actually, Isaac, won our MVP award this year, which is an award that we put out as a... He answered the most questions correctly of any person in the region, which is really actually a masterstroke, because the way our team is set up, I try to get as many kids involved as possible. And most teams only have four kids who compete on each team, but we take 17. So each kid only goes to two competitions. Isaac gets to go to three, because he's the captain, but he only competes in two of the three rounds, which means he was actually at a deficiency. He wasn't able to participate in every single round, but he still managed to answer more questions correctly than anyone else. So, and keep in mind, these questions are not like, name a king in Roman history. They're like, give me the perfect active indicative form of errant. So these are not like fun questions that we're filling up on in our trivia. I cannot speak... They've always, these kids just impressed me so much about their tenacity of knowledge, their interest in classical history, and all history in general, their interest in Latin. They're incredibly intelligent individuals, and I'm so proud to be a part of what they have to offer. So thank you, guys, very much, and thank you.
All right. Thank you all, and big round of applause for all of our students.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to all of the students. And the board will vote later on whether the perfect active indicative is actually fun or not. Some of us may disagree with you on that. The next item is the Highcrest Assistant Principal.
Yes, Susan Carlson has been selected as the new 6th grade Assistant Principal, replacing Shamil Dillard. Susan has a BA from Carroll University in Ohio, an MA from Northern Illinois University in Special Education, and is completing her Masters in Ed Leadership at Northeastern University. Susan is currently an 8th grade Learning Behavior Specialist at Willmet Junior High School. She previously worked at CPS, Niles, Glenview, and North Suburban Special Education District, or NSSD. Ms. Carlson, welcome.
I just want to thank Dr. Lechner and the board. I am extremely honored for this next phase in my career, and I'm really excited to join the extremely talented staff at Highcrest. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome.
The next item is the 2017-18 Final School Year Calendar. Due to the weather-related closing on February 9, the calendar needs to be adjusted. Because the district meets the legal requirements for the number of student attendance days, one emergency day can be assigned to February 9. The last day of school continues to be June 15, an early release day. The next item is the 2018-19 Board of Education Meeting Calendar. This is an annual event that the board needs to approve. The calendar reflects our current practice. There is no significant change. Next, we have ForFoya this month. The district received one from Nathan Mylick of Illinois Retired Teachers Association, requesting the names and email addresses for all 2018 retiring teachers and administrators. Janie Jordan of Data Research Partners, requesting a list of all of District 39's employees' names, email addresses, and primary campus location. Michelle Wiley, Staff Attorney of the Community Justice Division for Sergeant Shriver Center on Poverty Law. She was asking how many school resource officers are employed by District 39, or and any memorandum of understanding, or any agreement with the Police Department that provides a school resource officer. And finally, Katie Kim of NBC Channel 5, asking which District 39 schools have a school resource officer assigned in any documentation showing all policies and guidelines for that school resource officer. And that is all.
Great. Thank you. And that takes us to our strategic plan updates.
Yeah, the first one is grades 5-8 related arts course progression. This report provides an update on District 39's committee and its progress towards grades 5-8 related arts course progression. The recommended change is literally smooth out inconsistent offerings and adds a 5-8 coding progression. Katie Lee has this report.
Good evening. In this year's strategic plan, the Department of Curriculum Instruction set goals to review the related arts course offerings and progression for grades 5 through 8. Although our work is not complete, we wanted to share what we have to date. So in addition to the goals of the committee on this slide, the Department of Curriculum and Instruction collaborated with Highcrest and Willmet Junior High administrators to reflect on current course offerings and structure, assess gaps or overlaps in the related arts program, and consider providing new learning opportunities by offering new courses. So the committee began their work by drafting a philosophy statement. And prior to any curriculum review, this statement outlines agreed-upon beliefs, and serves as a way to assess if we are on track as a committee. It reads as follows: "District 39 believes that the arts reflect our culture while celebrating the unique identities, perspectives, and learning styles within and beyond our community. Exposing students to a variety of learning experiences will allow them to cultivate their creativity and critical thinking skills through collaboration within an inclusive environment. Students will explore diverse content with the goal of becoming artistically literate in each of the disciplines, music, media, visual, and performing arts. And course studies will encourage self-expression, risk-taking, and persistence, while building confidence and developing a lifelong appreciation for the arts." Once the first draft was completed, the members began to gather data on current structure and course offerings, so that each member would be informed of all grades 5 through 8 courses. On this slide, a brief summary of the current structure and recommended adjustments are presented. All structures remain the same, with the exception of two recommendations, and they are highlighted in red on the screen. So first, at Highcrest Middle School, currently, five out of six related arts courses are taken by our 5th and 6th graders. We recommend that 5th and 6th grade students take all of these classes. We recommend that 5th and 6th grade students take all related arts courses moving forward. In 7th grade, currently, they have options in art and singular options in the other disciplines. And, but we also recommend that 7th grade students be provided a couple of options in all disciplines. The first recommended adjustment, Highcrest Middle School students taking all related arts courses, can be addressed by making each course last six weeks. This adjustment supports exploratory nature of each of the related arts course. And as noted on the chart, the duration of the 7th and 8th grade courses will remain as it is currently. It naturally provides the incremental increase in duration that aligns well with increased specialization within the discipline. So a detailed chart of current recommended course offerings are provided as Appendix A and Appendix B respectively. So if you put them side by side with a couple of errors that I have personally caught, so I apologize for that. For the purpose of this presentation, though, I wanted to share an example of two different types of adjustments that the committee has been recommending. So first is an example of how current offerings are adjusted to align with recommended structure. So currently, in 7th grade, students may choose from two-dimensional, three-dimensional, and art and digital photography. And the recommendation is to offer digital photography as a part of a different category of courses, media and digital arts. Please note that digital photography did not go away. It is being recommended to be a part of a different categorical progression. This is a second example that demonstrates how current and new offerings align to create a more cohesive progression. So currently, in 7th grade, students do not have a tech-related course. So the recommendation is to offer a category of courses, computational thinking and programming. By creating three new courses, the category progression will begin in 5th grade with computational thinking, which is currently being offered to 6th graders, and stair-step into learning two programming languages, Python, an interpreted high-level programming language for general-purpose programming. It works with a variety of data structures, and SWIFT, robust and intuitive programming language created by Apple for building apps on iOS platforms, Mac, Apple language. So please note that creative communications did not go away as well. It is being recommended to be a part of a different categorical progression. So our next steps for the Related Arts Committee will be to continue the work of the committee and accomplish all the goals stated in the strategic plan. And the recommended course progression supports exploration and choice. It offers new learning experiences in the area of programming and technology. And the courses begin with broad exploratory experiences and work towards specialization. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do board members have questions?
Thank you for the report. I think we put a lot of work into it, and it looks like have moved to a more explainable process and was able to add some content. So I applaud the work and the effort that's gone into that. I had two quick questions. One, when they, when the students get to 7th and 8th grade, are they allowed to, are they still encouraged to pick from different categories? Or are they allowed to specialize in maybe one or two categories, like the four art classes, or whatever?
So currently, my understanding is that they rank the courses, and then their top, I'm sorry? Oh, just, okay, and there you go.
Currently, in 7th grade, students are just randomly placed into the six related arts classes, or five, they do five out of the six. And in 8th grade, they rank, there's like 10 options that they rank. And then, from there, we try to get them in one or two of those options. So with the new progressions, it would be, we're still looking at the best way to do that, but look, but there would be opportunities for them to take more than one class, we're hoping, in a specific category.
Okay, thank you. And then I had one other question. There's, I think I got the name right, Math in the Real World, or Math and Economics.
Math of Economics.
Math of Economics. It's not a related arts class now. Is some of that material, you know, how to balance a checkbook, how to use math in the real world, is that going to be folded into other curriculums?
So, in all honesty, when we looked at the Math of Economics, if you notice on Appendix A at the bottom, there's no progression leading to it or after, and it is framed as a related art. We believe that the concepts of econ and the way that math is embedded in it is important. It just was such an outlier in this particular structure and progression. Not, right now, we're recommending that it phases out as a course by itself, so that we can offer some other things, and this particular teacher can teach the new programming strand. However, that does not mean that in the future, we wouldn't look at a business platform type, of course, because again, we want to keep current with our offerings when it comes to our related arts. So there's an entrepreneurial way, and there's programs out there right now that are being established at the high school level that can come to the middle school and be just as effective for the goals of this class. But we're, to be honest, we're looking at this more in the future, and to phase this out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yep, Ms. Kearney.
I do. Thank you. First of all, I really liked this report, and I love where it's going. My question, and maybe it's an obvious one, but the recommendation, obviously, for Highcrest Middle School students to take all six
Yes.
versus, has to do with the fact, or I'm assuming, this is really my question, that it has to do with the fact, when they get to 7th and 8th grade, they've had to have taken those classes.
What we want to do at Highcrest is build that foundational experience and just expose them to more, so that as they get to 7th and 8th grade, as Ms. Jackson shared, they get to specialize, you know, into certain courses. So we're trying to make that happen with their selections.
But point being-
The answer is yes?
Yeah.
Yes, it's based on a progression of courses, yes.
So obviously, if they get to 8th grade, and they pick whatever they pick, they will be qualified to take all those, correct?
Yes.
That's what I was seeing in there. And just making a comment on that, Math of Economics, without knowing what the plan is for the future, or where you're going, or anything like that. I would love to see something stay in this district, though, around, that relates to Math of Economics, in your basic life management, financial building skills.
Yeah, but it needs to be part of a progression, because that's the direction that we're headed.
Okay, that's fine.
Future business model, whatever.
Just don't want it to go away.
Other comments or questions, Ms. Scheider-Fapes?
I love all the offerings, the diversity. I enjoy watching the kids try all these new things. I'm just curious, when are we gonna go even further back into a K4 analysis of the curriculum?
For the related arts progression?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh.
Or is that not planned?
It actually isn't planned, only because the domains are established. So music, art, so kind of the basic foundational courses that we offer with related arts. This one was more, we started noticing that courses were being added without understanding, like, where was it beginning and where was it ending? And so we just wanted to do kind of a quality check for ourselves with all of the elementaries and the different grade levels. We have a music class, we have an art class. We want, you know, we want to offer those kind of basics for the students, but... So really, no plan, to be honest.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sternowire.
Just to clarify, and I think this is what you were saying, but I want to just clarify it. So you are saying that in 7th and 8th grade, you're gonna change the way, or you're looking to change the way they make choices, so it becomes more focused, and they're, correct?
Yes, I think the goal is to allow for more choice, for any choice, in 7th grade, and then to hopefully be able to honor the choices in a better way at 8th grade. I'm sure, talking to 8th graders, you've probably heard that, you know, we try to get them in one or two of them, but it's certainly not all four all the time, so...
Thank you. I was just looking for clarity. I thought that's what you were saying, I just want to make sure, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much for the work and the report. We look forward to hearing more about the successes of it next year. That takes us to our next section, which is Annual Business. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped right over kindergarten enrichment, because, you know, who cares about that? Great, let's go with, yeah, that's a joke for anybody watching. Kindergarten enrichment.
Yes, this report is an ongoing strategic investigation of the feasibility of kindergarten enrichment for District 39. The presentation will include the impact on operating fund balance for two scenarios, build classrooms or build modular units. Given space and funding options, the administration is wanting to further explore the idea of building modular units, so we could provide a half-day kindergarten enrichment program as a self-sustaining unit with little impact on tax dollars. And we have Katie Lee and Gail Bushamie with this report.
Good evening again. During last month's Board of Education meeting, administration presented a kindergarten enrichment initiative update, which provided detailed and background information for board consideration. Based on the District 39 kindergarten enrichment survey results, the board requested additional space and funding options, and its impact on fund balances. So to address space, administration presented two possible scenarios, build classrooms or build modular units. And to address funding, administration presented two possible options. District 9 assumes all construction costs, while parents can assume all program costs, or parents assume all construction and program costs. So Gail Bushamie, Business Manager, will share the potential impact on fund balances.
This chart represents the operating fund balances if classrooms are built. Parents would be charged for program and construction costs at a tuition rate of $6,500 per student. Construction would occur in fiscal year '20 and '21, and you see the dips in the operating fund balances in those years. In future years, the operating fund balances should start to increase as construction costs are recovered through tuition. So this chart only goes out to 2023, but you should see an upward swing in future years. This chart reflects the impact to operating fund balances if parents are charged tuition at $4,145 to cover program fees only. You can see the impact from construction, again, in fiscal year '20 and '21, driving the operating fund balances toward the 30% fund balance line at a steep slope, eventually declining below the 30% threshold. The next chart will reflect both scenarios for building classrooms. As noted in the report, the blue line represents our updated five-year projections before adding kindergarten enrichment. The construction costs are included in fiscal year '20 and '21, as reflected in the chart. And by charging parents' fees for program and construction costs, the red line will eventually start to increase in future years as construction costs are recovered. This has the potential to close the gap between the red and the blue lines. The green line reflects parents paying for program costs only. In this scenario, the operating fund balance will dip below the 30% threshold. Now let's see how modulators will impact the operating fund balance. This chart reflects charging parents' tuition of $5,325 per student for program and construction costs. You see a gradual decline in operating fund balances after construction of modulators in fiscal year '20, as compared to construction of classrooms in the prior slides. On this chart, we're charging parents' tuition of $4,145 to cover the program costs only. Construction of modulators would again be completed in fiscal year '20. Both scenarios for modulators would keep operating fund balances above the 30% line, and is reflected in the next slide, where we have our, all three scenarios. Here, we see the impact of building modulators on operating fund balances. The blue line, again, is our updated five-year projections before adding kindergarten enrichment. The cost of modulators is substantially less than building classrooms, as reflected in this chart, where fund balances for each scenario align more closely to the blue line. The fund balance trajectory is not as significant in this scenario and maintains operating fund balances above the 30% line. Even though the lines are close together in this chart, it is important to note that, for example, in fiscal year '23, the difference in fund balance of 1.7% between the red and the green lines represents an estimated fund balance difference of about 1 million, 1.2 million. This chart is a comparison of building classrooms versus modulators and the impact on operating fund balances. The blue line, again, represents our updated five-year projections before kindergarten enrichment. For both the red and the green lines, parents are charged tuition to cover construction and program costs. Recommendations will be discussed next.
So given space and the funding options, as well as the impact on the operating fund balances of each, administration believes building modulators would address the goal of providing a half-day kindergarten enrichment as a self-sustaining program with no impact on tax dollars. Although building classrooms to each elementary school would provide benefits, such as classroom space and be aesthetically pleasing, the impact on operating fund balances is greater than building modular units at each elementary school. And some other funding advantages of modular units are that construction costs for modular units are significantly less than building classrooms. Tuition offers the district an opportunity to recover all programming construction costs, and depending on actual enrollment, tuition may be adjusted in the future. And if the modular units are no longer needed, they can be sold back to gain back some revenue. In addition, the modular units can be built in half the time of the conventional construction, due to a reduced construction schedule. And this construction timeline would advance the district's ability to offer kindergarten enrichment in fall of 2019, a year earlier than classrooms. The actual modular units, classroom space, and bathroom are newly built off-site, while onsite foundation is laid close to an external door of the existing school building. And each unit is built to meet the same codes and standards applied to conventionally-built classrooms, offering energy-efficient structures, including high-efficiency HVAC systems, electrical, and technology needs. And for security purposes, locked doors will feature a card swipe entry. So District 39's next step of action will be to resurvey the same population of families, parents and families with students enrolled in early childhood through 4th grade, so that we may draw comparisons from both survey results. The results will assist in finalizing decisions regarding space, modular units versus classroom, and funding tuition costs for a half-day kindergarten enrichment program. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do board members have questions? Start over on this side this time.
I do.
Go for it.
The third graph, chart, the number, in the first two charts, the first one with the classrooms, the, you had red line representing parent, or families, taking care of all costs, tuition and construction. Keep the third one, I'm just, that's the one I want to look at. No, okay, so let's just look at this one at a time. Yes, so I'm just looking for a number difference here. I'm making this a long question, but you got to understand where I'm coming from. So, anyway, the red line has, is for both construction and tuition costs covered through tuition. So anyway, the red line is for both construction and tuition costs covered through tuition, program and construction covered through tuition. And then the green line is we take care of construction and then tuition covers programming, correct? Next one, same thing, where it's modular, 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 yeah, units. We've got the red line covering construction and tuition, or and programming with tuition. And then the green line, just the same thing. We take care of construction, we mean the district, and the program costs tuition, which is $4,145 in that example. Third chart, where it puts them all together, which is a great visual. I noticed that the red line. Yeah, the red line, we didn't give the option in this one for the district to cover construction costs and tuition to cover programming costs. The red line is tuition covering programming and construction, correct? Reason I'm asking is I'd like to see the district cover the construction costs, and I want to see that comparison. Do you see what, am I correct in what I just said? Right, but the third chart doesn't bring that all together. Okay, so now I see what you're doing with the third chart. You did the construction and programming. You just used those lines. We didn't give the option. Okay. My point is I'd like to see an option, what it would cost, because I liked where the green line went. Right, but I'm saying this doesn't all tie in. I'm just trying to say something. Yeah, I want to see what the effect is. Yeah, what the effect is, doing modulators, where we take care, we being the district, take care of the construction, and the families take care of the programming through tuition, which from what I understand is $4,145. This red line I'm trying to tell you shows me $5,325. Right, okay. I did see it there. But just to be clear, because I know that you don't want five options, I guess is what we're saying on this, but I feel like not showing those other two options implies that we're not even going to consider. And I want to consider that.
Okay, other questions or do you have anything else?
No, that's, I just wanted that clarification.
Yep, we got it. I think that makes, we understand that. Other questions or comments from board members? Mr. Cesaretti?
Yeah, hey, thank you for doing this. This is, we asked for this and we really do appreciate it. And I completely agree with Tracy. I think I can see where that, I think I know the percentage, because it's here, but it's not there. I think it'll be useful. I agree. The thing that I wanted to go through again was, what are the assumptions we're using, big picture, for enrollment to get at the tuition number? Because I know they're, I think they're conservative and I think they're reasonable.
Yes, we are estimating enrollment at 300 students, and we're saying that 70% would sign up for kindergarten enrichment in the first year based on the survey results and then increasing to 80% the second year and 90% the third year, and we kept it level at 90%.
Okay, yeah, and we think that's conservative and reasonable.
Yeah, 70% is solid because we surveyed parents.
Yeah.
And we know that from other school districts that have done this, it jumps right up to near 99% really quickly. But we were conservative in terms of 70, 80, 90.
So what does tuition look like if it is 90? What would that be?
It's the same. Whatever, whatever, whatever scenario you.
Oh, because you built it in.
Right, whatever scenario you pick. Right, you're right. You get it.
Yeah, I get it. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Penzicca?
Thank you for the report. I think we've been talking about this for a while, and this is a nice summary to bring the information to the table. There's a couple of quick things that I wanted to highlight or reiterate, maybe. One to John's question. The tuition was level, but we have the option, if we go through any of these scenarios, of reevaluating the tuition each year. And if more kids show up, the amount that gets amortized out from the capital expense goes down, so the tuition would actually go down if enrollment goes up, if we chose to go that direction. So that's one option, the flexibility of the proposal that you presented. One that I really want to highlight, because it gets kind of lost, is the the big step that was taken here to give the flexibility of moving all of these things forward by a year. The original option of building, independent of the cost, independent of the tuition, independent of all those other things, would have taken two years from when or if we made a decision. The concept of doing the modulators is both financially easier to discuss, but also moves forward the date by a year. So if we decide to do this, when we decide to do this, we can start having an impact within a year instead of two years, and I think that's a really important point that I'm glad that was brought up, but I wanted to just kind of reiterate that quickly. And then we were talking some about the options of modular versus building. And later this evening, we're going to have a housing report or related to housing. There's a slight decline, you know, statistically probably not valid yet to determine any kind of trend. But if that does turn into a little trend, the modular option gives us more flexibility to customize how many classrooms we need to build. You know, five years from now, we only needed to build one classroom per grade. Because of a trend in population, that would be a significant savings to the community. So I think that's good, and I think that's especially important because of the news articles that our sister school, Winnetka, is going through right now with their declining population. They have a different tax base, different reasons why their number of children is declining, and ours is stable. Well, Metta is a great place to live. But they're having a lot of problems now that they're trying to rebalance their schools and figure out population. So retaining some flexibility, I think, is an important part of the scenario that you presented tonight. So, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I'm sorry, follow-up question. So when are, what's the process for setting out the next survey? What's that going to look like, timeframe and next steps?
Well, I think that once we know what we're presenting to the community based on these scenarios and funding options, so I think we need to first address your request and looking at the graph with just the program cost. And then based on feedback, we can then formulate questions, asking them about modular versus classroom. Here's the tuition levels, and then what is your stance on participating in a kindergarten enrichment program? So it could be anywhere from a month to two months.
I guess what I'm saying is, are we going to slow this down?
No, 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 no. I was planning on doing this next month. Because we've already done the survey for the $6,500 new construction. We know that 70% of our parents said yes to the higher amount. Now we can see what their opinions are about the lower amount.
In that first survey.
Yep, go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
In that first survey, I didn't receive that survey because I'm not a kindergarten, but did you offer a lower amount? Okay, so the only thing parents could say yes to was $6,500. Okay, so I think that's a point to make.
We needed that information so we could do our projections.
I understand that completely, but.
Now we're going to give them an option.
Personally, I think $6,500 is a lot to ask for full-day kindergarten or for kindergarten enrichment. But, so that's why I want to see both options, but I would just want to make sure when we say that, you know, 70% of parents said yes to $6,500, I really might interpret that as 70% of parents said yes, they'd be very interested in full-day kindergarten, and so interested that they would be willing to pay that if they had to. But, yeah. Correct, but without giving an option of $4,135.
Yep, that's right.
Thank you.
Other comments, thoughts? Great. This has been a lot of work, and it will continue to be a lot of work, but I think it's an incredible service to the community. Thank you very much for what you're doing, and thank you for the report. And with that, we actually do move on to annual business.
Yes, we are ready. The first item is our fiscal year 2019 operating funds tentative budget. This is the next step in our annual budget process, and it involves the operating funds, which consist of education, operations and maintenance, transportation, IMRF, TORT, and working cash funds. Together, these represent 98% of our total budget, and we have Gail Bushamie and Ellen Crispino have this report.
Thank you, Dr. Lekner. Tonight, we are presenting the tentative budget for fiscal year 2019. The following assumptions have been built into the tentative budget. First, our revenue assumptions. Property tax collections from the 2017 levy are projected to increase at CPI of 2.1% plus an estimated $370,000 in new property growth. New property growth is based on a five-year historical average. Our corporate personal property tax receipts are estimated to decrease slightly from our fiscal year 18 allocations, and our local revenue includes student fees, lunch sales, tuition, and before-school early bird program, and that's anticipated to decrease by 5.1% based on our actual collections from the current year. General state aid is projected at our actual fiscal year 18 allocation, and our grant revenues for fiscal year 19 remain unchanged in the tentative budget at this time. This may be adjusted when allocations are released by the state. In addition, we're assuming we're receiving four payments from the state. And in fiscal year 18, so far, our district has received our final payment from fiscal year 17, and as of today, we now have received two payments for fiscal year 18. Next is our expenditure assumptions, which are as follows. The education fund salary costs are estimated to increase slightly, 0.27%, over the fiscal year 18 budget. Per the contract, certified staff contract salaries are increasing 4% for fiscal year 19, and support staff are increasing 2.1%. And these increases are offset by salary savings due to the 15 certified staff retirements for fiscal year 18. This tentative budget reflects projected staffing levels based on our current enrollment numbers. The education fund benefit expenditures are projected to increase to 3.84% over the fiscal year budget. Benefits are based on current enrollment and actual insurance rates for 1819. This also includes retiree insurance costs per their respective contracts. These assumptions form the foundation for the development of the fiscal year 19 tentative budget. Specific fund information follows. The education fund is the largest fund and contains budgets to provide for the basic instruction of students and the day-to-day educational activities of the district. The revenues in this fund have a projected overall increase of 1.81%. Local revenues account for 91.4% of the budgeted revenues for this fund. This includes property taxes, food sales, tuition, interest, and student fees. Expenditures have an overall projected decrease, a slight decrease of 0.03%. Salaries account for 76.8% of the ed fund expenditures and are projected to remain relatively flat over fiscal year 18 due to retirements. Benefits currently account for 11.9% of the ed fund expenditures. The tentative fiscal year 19 budget anticipates a 3.84% increase in benefits. There is a decrease of 10.8% in purchase services due to a decrease in one-time professional development costs and reallocation of expenses. We also have a decrease of 31.7% in capital outlay due to the one-time purchase of the new phone system last year and fiscal, this year fiscal year 18. There is an increase of 11.8 in tuition costs, and that's based on projected enrollment for fiscal year 19. The ed fund is projected to end fiscal year June 30, 2019, with a deficit of 1.1 million and a fund balance reserve of 28.3 million, as reflected on this slide. Next is the O&M fund, which contains budgets necessary to maintain the buildings and grounds of the district. O&M revenues are projected to have an overall increase of 4.93% based on the distribution of the 2017 levy. O&M expenditures are projected to have an overall increase of 9.94%. O&M capital outlay expenditures are expected to increase by 84% due to approved health and safety projects that are budgeted for fiscal year 19. The O&M fund reflects a year-end projected deficit of 1.1 million, including debt service. This deficit is mainly due to one-time planned construction costs of 4.6 million. The O&M fund balance reserve at June 30, 2019 is estimated at slightly over $1 million. This balance includes a $750,000 permanent transfer from the ed fund to the O&M fund. In addition, we will need to do a resolution for an interfund loan similar to last year to cover any deficits from month to month for construction costs. This interfund loan will be repaid by the end of fiscal year 19.
So next we have the transportation fund. It contains the budgets necessary for the transportation of students. The revenues are projected to have an overall decrease of 4.7% based on the anticipated distribution of the 2017 levy and receiving four payments from the state. Expenditures are projected to have an overall increase of 4.2% due mainly to the cost of the vendor contract. The transportation fund reflects a year-end projected deficit of $256,000, and the fund balance reserve at June 30, 2019 is estimated to be just over $1 million. The IMRF Social Security Fund contains budgets for the district's contributions to Social Security, Medicare, and the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. Revenues are projected to have an overall increase of 5.6% based on the anticipated distribution of the 2017 levy. Expenditures are projected to increase at 1.7%, and these increased costs are related to the increase in salary costs. This fund reflects a year-end projected plan deficit of $132,000, and the fund balance reserve at June 30, 2019 is estimated to be $490,000. Next, we have the working cash fund. This fund enables the board to have money in its treasury for the district's short-term cash flow needs. Budgeted revenues are projected to decrease 16.5% based on the anticipated distribution of the levy. The working cash fund reflects a year-end projected surplus of $94,000, and the fund balance reserve at June 30, 2019 is estimated to be 1.1 million. Last, we have the TORT fund. This is primarily to fund business insurance, including liability, property, and workers' compensation insurance, as well as unemployment coverage. The TORT fund revenue is projected to decrease 16.5% based on the anticipated distribution of the levy. At this time, fiscal year 19 TORT fund expenditures are estimated to increase 0.7%. During the months ahead, as more accurate information becomes available, these expenditure estimates may be revised to reflect actual changes in TORT insurance costs for fiscal year 2019. The TORT fund reflects a year-end projected plan deficit of $248,000, and the fund balance reserve at June 30, 2019 is estimated to be $554,000. The plan is to reduce the fund balance to a more reasonable level. In summary, the total budgeted revenue for the operating funds is projected. In summary, the total budgeted revenue for the operating funds is projected to be 75.1 million, which is a 2% increase over the prior year's budget. The fiscal year 19 budgeted operating fund expenditures are estimated at 77.9 million, which is an increase of 1.2% from the fiscal year 18 budget. This results in a projected overall operating funds deficit for fiscal year 2019 of 2.8 million. The main reason for the deficit is the planned construction projects of 4.6 million that are included in expenditures in the operations and maintenance fund for fiscal year 19. The fund balance to expenditures ratio in the operating funds is projected to be maintained at 55.7% at June 30th, 2019. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does the board have any questions at this time? Okay, we've.
I do, actually. Sorry. They're just detailed questions and just because we're doing expense reviews and committee of the whole, can you tell me, I just can't remember off the top of my head, do we pay 100% of IMRF contributions? Like TRS?
Yes.
Well, for administrators, we pay 100% TRS contributions.
We pay, every employee pays 4.5% IMRF. The district pays their portion, so it's 100% funded each year. If you're asking about an administrator.
Do we pay, we don't pay the employees' portion of IMRF, should be my question.
Except for the business manager.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Yep, go ahead.
I have two. So, the, in your first slide, Gail, oh, thank you, by the way, great budget presentation. In the first slide, there was new property growth revenue of $370,000. That's revenue?
That is the value of new property growth in the community is what we're estimating. It's 15.1 million in EAV.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so that's actual revenue to us.
That's the actual revenue that we generate.
So, we're estimating 15 million of EAV increase, which would generate that much revenue.
Yeah, we put that in there for a reason because people hear, oh, 15 million dollars in new property growth.
Yeah, no, I get it.
That's what you get.
Wanted to get it straight.
Not even close.
Okay, so that was one.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and, well, did you have a follow-on on that one? Mine, the other one.
I just wanted to clarify, what you were asking is, bottom line is, as a result of 15 million in new property growth, that gives us 300 and whatever, a thousand dollars.
Right. And in order to get that revenue, right, that's why when we do the levy, we ask for more than CPI.
That's correct because we have no idea what the EAV is. It's not even determined as of today.
After the fact. Okay. Thank you.
Actually, for that revenue, because we're allowed to. We, CPI plus new property growth is what we're, we get. We base our new property growth as, ask on, based on historical estimates, so we know what to ask for. And technically, typically, I guess, we can over-ask at that point, so we don't lose any, but we don't just ask for it because, so we don't just get CPI, we ask for it because we can.
Yeah.
Well, I think there's a, there can be a debate on why we ask for it, but we ask for it. And we, we are allowed to ask for it and we do ask for it.
Yeah, I wasn't going there. I was explaining that it's part of what we can ask for.
We, we got it.
Yeah, no, it's good. Thank you. Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Mark. Okay, and then I go to the back of the presentation and wanted to clarify, so in the fiscal year 19 budget, there's a red negative amount of 5,393,000. Have we already approved that expense?
Yes, that is the construction projects and the new fire alarm, that, a system that'll be added to High Crest's in addition to the construction.
Okay.
And then we also have our debt certificate payment in there.
Great. It's very important for us to have the board approve all of this before we begin the budget process.
Yeah, thank you. That, that was all I had.
All right. Other questions or comments? Great, and we have certainly gone over this in the SFC on a regular basis, so thank you very much for the report. Thank you for the.
Mark, I just thought, I just have one more question, I'm sorry. What was the professional development one-time payment that we're not experiencing anymore that allowed for there to be a decrease?
I think that was the EdgeClimber and the NWA map, Katie, is that right, last year? Sorry. In the fiscal year 2019.
I've actually never used this before. Yeah, so we purchased those two platforms and then along with it was some professional development straight from the companies. So, I'm not sure quite how much was reported, but those two were, those two factors were part of it.
I'm sure significantly. I was asking, I'm like, what professional development do we know is never going to come back? That's why I was asking that, okay? Yes. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Great. Thank you very much for the report. Moving on.
Yes, 2018-19 Student Staff Planning. Student, this is an annual report. Student registration began on April 4th for the next school year. We monitor registration numbers until the start of next school year. By reviewing enrollment weekly, we can adhere to, carefully to the board, class size guidelines for each grade late, class size guidelines for each grade level, and Dr. Glawacki has this report.
It is very early in the process. It just started, but if our numbers are on track, we're looking at an expected slight decrease in the number of homerooms in our EC through 4th grade schools. It's likely we could see an increase, most likely that we'll see an increase by the time we get to August, as we have a lot of mobility through the summer. That's why we're watching the numbers so closely at a weekly pace. In grades 5 through 8, there will be a slight change specifically in 6th grade. There's an, currently an extra two teacher team due to the higher enrollment and next year, that extra team will not be necessary and will be absorbed at the 7th and 8th grade level where the double A team will continue. In special education, we're looking at increasing two learning behavior specialist teachers and one school psychologist, specifically to help with the therapeutic intervention program or the TIP program that will be expanded to the junior high school, Willmet Junior High. And then, as Dr. Lechner shared, we're just going to continue to watch these numbers very closely so that we can make sure we stay within the Board of Ed guidelines for class size.
Are there any questions from board members? Okay, seeing none?
Just a quick one. I just wanted to, to follow up on something you just said. I know the numbers always go up, in particular kindergarten and first grade, because there's a lot of variables, I won't go into that. You, you mentioned though, the, the, you expected when the final numbers are in, sometimes summer, that we'll be back to the same level that we were last year or that the gap will just shrink a little bit?
We know for sure the gap shrinks because we always start with a maximum conservativeness. Historically, we march right back up to where we've been, but you never know. Every year, we look at it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, next item.
Yes, after-school programming at High Crest and Junior High. Since Youth Connection announced its dissolution, we've been working on supporting its replacement. We intend to honor the Youth Connection history in District 39, provide a seamless transition as well. We're excited to be able to support a new program in our Learning Commons at the Junior High, giving greater student access to technology, flexible spaces, and increased options. Students are actually part of a rebranding process that will continue into next year. Kelly Jackson has this report.
You shared the slides earlier.
Sure, let's do that. If, if you all want to take a moment to get the slides, let's go to the Cooperative 90's Health Dental Plan and we'll come back.
Yes, our new Cooperative 90's Insurance Co-op has its own governing board and each member of the co-op is being now asked to pass a resolution indicating who will be the representative on that governing board. So, we're recommending that we continue, the Administrator for Human Resources to be that representative with the Business Manager as its alternate. And Dr. Glawacki, what can you add?
I would just add that Ellen Crispino and I have attended the board meetings this year and this would continue with this resolution.
Okay, are there any questions on that? Yeah, go ahead.
Just an update question, because I started out there when we were turning, when we were talking about joining the co-op or whatever and then Lisa took over. How's that going? Like price, is it what we believed it would be with cost containment, et cetera?
Yep, it is. We are in open enrollment right now. Actually, it just ended last Friday, so we're in the process of planning our implementation for June 1st.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and we will take a moment and do the board policy review and then we will come back.
Great. We're looking at second and final reading of the revised board policy, Board of Education policies and pretty much most of the board revisions have been made and are reflected in the policies as we're currently presenting. And Dr. Glawacki, anything else to add to the policies?
I think some of your colleagues would really like you to, I'm just kidding, it's fun. Okay, does the board have any questions on, on that? On the policy review? Okay, we're in good shape. You know, we can go ahead and, oh, we have the second opportunity for public comments. We'll do that. This is the second opportunity for the audience to address the board. Does anyone have any comments that they would like to address the board with at this time? Nope. Seeing none, we can move on and, yeah, let's go ahead and vote. The next order of business that we'll take care of is the consent agenda under the action items. Are there any items that the board would like removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, then may I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move to approve the personnel report dated April 23rd, 2018. I've moved to approve the appointment of the 2018-2019 High Crest Middle School Assistant I move to approve the resolution regarding the non-reemployment, part-time, partial-year educational support personnel employees and authorized notification according to the requirement of the Illinois School Code, Section 10-23.5. I move to approve the resolution appointing a district representative and an alternate, alternate to the governing board of the Cooperative 90's Health and Dental Plan. I move to approve the 2017-2018 final school year calendar. I move to approve the calendar of dates for regular meetings of the Board of Education and to set the location of the regular meetings at McHalian Education Center, 615 Locust Road, Willmet, Illinois, 60091. I move to approve as second and final reading of revised Board of Education policies, 6:235, access to electronic networks, 6:240, field trips, 6:241, student government, 6:250, volunteers, 6:255, assemblies and ceremonies, and 6:260, complaints about curriculum, instructional material, and programs. I move to release to the public the executive session minutes of September 25th, 2017, November 13th, 2017, December 18th, 2017, and January 22nd, 2018. I move to approve, to dispose of executive session audio recordings pursuant to district policy for the following dates. November 7th, 2015, November 16th, 2015, December 14th, 2015, January 25th, 2016, February 22nd, 2016, March 14th, 2016, April 18th, 2016, and April 25th, 2016. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between March 20, 2018 and April 23rd, 2018 in the following amounts. Educational fund, $647,495.48. O&amp;M fund, $230,255.24. Transportation fund, $151,742.27. Capital projects, $25,311.60 for a total all funds of $1,054,804.59. I move to approve the annual checks issued between March 20, 2018 and April 23rd, 2018 in the following amounts. Educational fund, $349,677.76. O&amp;M fund, $4,374.81. Transportation fund, $96.24 for total all funds of $354,148.81.
Thank you very much. The motion has been made. May I have a second?
A second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would the, the clerk please call the roll?
Does it say already?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you very much. The motion passes. And with that, I think we're ready for the after-school programming at HMSWJHS and thank you for being fast on your feet.
Youth Connection in Willmet has supported District 39 families for close to 30 years through providing after-school programming, theater opportunities, and special events for our students. I want to start this evening by thanking them for their many years of support. Their countless volunteer hours and dedication of the Youth Connection Board have helped to make a difference in so many lives in our community and we are truly indebted to them for their many years of service. We look forward to honoring Youth Connection through plaques that will be installed, both at Willmet Junior High and High Crest Middle School, and through a reception to be held later this spring. As Dr. Lechner noted, at the end of the 2017-2018 school year, Youth Connection will be dissolved as a nonprofit organization, leaving a void in low-cost afternoon programming for students and families and the need of involvement in fun, supervised, safe activities after school. This chart shows current programming for the current Youth Connection supported, supported programs such as RAD, which stands for recreational academic development at High Crest Middle School, the Den at Willmet Junior High, and Homework Club at both schools. In addition to RAD, Den, and the Homework Club, Youth Connection has also sponsored art and theater opportunities for students and special events such as Battle of the Bands. According to Youth Connection statistics from the 2015-16 school year, the Den and RAD after-school programs serve close to 350 students across the campus and Homework Club serve just over 260 students across the campus, so a good number of kids from our community. We are committed to continuing to support this low-cost after-school programming in the district and have outlined it, a rebranded structure for this programming to be implemented next school year. As a part of this rebranding process, students were surveyed about interests and names for the new spaces. They were asked about naming these after-school programs and the consent was the Hawk Nest for High Crest Middle School and the Wolf Den for Willmet Junior High. There were lots of unique creative submissions, but these were the ones that went out. Both the Hawk Nest and the Wolf Den will run on the same calendar as the Youth Connection RAD and Den programs and will envelop Homework Club into their activity structure. Each program will run for two hours after school. Part of the goal of the programming is to encourage student leadership and student creativity, so students will be involved in helping to identify activities throughout the year, including but not limited to games, recreational opportunities, and movies. The Hawks Nest will take place in the LMC at High Crest and the Wolf Den will be in the Learning Commons at Willmet Junior High. Students will pay a slight fee as they go, $4 a day for this programming and that will be through kind of a check-in process, so they will pay as they go. In addition to after-school programming, we are hoping to continue Youth Connection traditions such as the variety show at High Crest and the Battle of the Bands at Willmet Junior High. We are in discussion with staff and the PTO as to how to continue to support these opportunities. At Willmet Junior High, the PTO Encore Program will continue to provide extracurricular theater opportunities for students and may be able to expand on those options in the future. As with any new structure, we look forward to seeking feedback from students and parents about the programming, its effectiveness, and how we can continue. about the programming, its effectiveness, and how we can continue to improve in the future. With that, I will take any questions.
Does the board have any questions? Yep, go ahead.
Who are you thinking would be the supervisors? Who are the staff going to be? Are they District thirty-nine staff?
Yes. Most likely, that's what, that's what we would do. Generally, we would post the, the positions at both schools and then seek people that would be interested in supervising for those hours after school. They're currently staffed by mainly District thirty-nine people.
And so when you say part of the reason is utilizing the Learning Commons, which is great, when you think about kind of how that changes things, would you be offering classes? Do you know, or kind of, it feels still a little undefined.
Yeah, I think because currently the programs are drop-in in nature, so they're not super structured. We wanted to leave a little bit of it loose and get the students to help us create that structure. So there may be opportunities for things like a Uker card tournament if students want to do something like that or, you know, Jaws week or something like a movie week or different themes that they might be able to come up with. We also wanted to factor in, right now Homework Club is a separate structure. We are enveloping that into this structure. So we'll have two supervisors at each building and we'll be able to provide kind of separate spaces if students want to spend an extended time for homework. But we want to structure the time so that all students have an opportunity to sit down and, and do some work while they're there as well.
Other questions, Ms. Sternwaller?
Yeah, I have a bunch of questions. I'd like to understand the number of students that Youth Connection has been serving across. When you say that Youth Connection was serving three hundred and fifty students across the campus, the, the Den and RAD programs, and then the Homework Club was serving just over two hundred and sixty students, I want to have a better idea of what that means. Kind of, I, I want to understand the depth of that because I guess what I'm unclear about is the, the magnitude of, like, if, how many students were using Youth Connection on a regular basis, you know, for two hours a day, every single day of the week?
So those, those numbers came from their website, the Youth Connection Willmett website. And it was, when I say across the campus, I totaled up the numbers that they said were individual students, unique drop-ins throughout the course of the year at each school. So for RAD, for Den, and I totaled those up, and then for Homework Club at each school. So those are, it, it did not, I don't have the number of students who use it on an ongoing basis. I would say that average, just, just anecdotally at, you know, RAD when we stop in, at High Crest, I would say there's probably twenty to twenty-five kids on a daily basis. And, and it varies depending on time of the year and activities or clubs that are going on. And the Den is, we get a lot of students at the beginning of the afternoon at the Den. A lot of them stop in honestly to buy a snack and then they head out. But there's probably a good ten, maybe fifteen students who are consistent in the Den on a regular basis. Homework Club, it fluctuates also, but I would say there's greater numbers at the Junior High in Homework Club on a daily basis. And then at High Crest, I would say that they're slightly smaller.
Okay. And then I was wondering if we have a sense, I would have guessed that at High Crest you would see greater numbers of kids in the fifth grade petering off, you know, as you get up into the older grades, kind of relying on this program? I was just wondering if there's any way that we can survey the parents to find out. My only concern is that you've got parents that are going from elementary school, making the jump into fifth grade and they don't know yet, you know, kind of what to expect. And I, I just wonder, just for the, for the parents, whether there's a way to find out whether, which families are kind of counting on this as a means of.
We can absolutely communicate, but we're going to continue an existing program. So whoever comes.
No, I mean, it's just, but we're going into a costing, a program that costs four dollars a day, you know, and I just would love to know if there are families that are actually counting on this. At four dollars a day, every single day, you know, then it becomes a care, an aftercare. Do you know what I'm getting at?
It's eighty bucks a month.
It's eighty dollars a month.
Eighty to a hundred.
I mean, and I can understand as a, as a drop-in, it makes, it's fantastic. I mean, I'm, I'm really glad that we're doing this and I'm not knocking it. I think it's wonderful and, but as a drop-in, it's fantastic. But I'm just wondering how many families are kind of counting on it. So just wanted to get a sense of that. And I would imagine it peters off and I know there aren't that many, but I just kind of wondered. Yeah, it would be nice just, just to, just to let people know and do that communication. I think it would be a good thing. Certainly. Thank you.
Other comments or, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I like, I think I get your point, Ellen, because this used to be free, I think.
Through Youth Connection, it's been, yes, they, Youth Connection is funded. It's a, it's a nonprofit. So it's, it's funded through donations and that's how they have supported the structure for so long, yes.
Yeah, and I think it's a great idea if we're going to charge a fee to charge it on a, on a per-use basis. I think it's fantastic. But I, I wonder if it's more trouble than it's worth to collect four dollars a day from the people who drop in.
Our plan is to do it like lunch.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, it's going to be really simple. Very simple. And also I want to add that, remember we had an angel fundraiser downtown?
Right.
I raised sixty hours already for Angel Fund, so we have, we have a great head start. Sixty hours worth for kids who need it.
Great.
I was going to say also that, you know, in our discussions with PTOs at both schools, they, they are very generous as well in supporting students that need funds to cover things like this and they have said that they would do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have something to say. On that note, PTAos are super generous and thank you. That said, what I thought was really nice about Youth Connection, if PTOs, A's and O's or however do decide to contribute or help out in this capacity, it'd be really nice to continue to respect the fact that when it was through Youth Connection, nobody, no child or family had to walk up to Youth Connection and justify that they needed the money or needed to be called out. I mean, and, and also I want to remember too that, and Youth, so no definition and, I mean, sixty hours, you're talking, just, that would be nice if there's blanket contributions or something like that. You know what I'm saying? And then secondly, also not losing light of the fact that it's not just used for babysitting. I think a lot of kids go there because there's nowhere else to go. Everyone's scheduled, not every kid's an athlete, not every kid's in band, not every kid gets tutored. And it's difficult to find friends after school these days. And for those that, you know, aren't super outgoing and don't just knock on kids' doors either, it's, it's been a really nice place, at least what I've heard, for a lot of kids who just, you know, are, are those kids that want to hang out and don't have some formal organization to go to, to provide that. So I just think that would, that's really important more. So, so we do see the trickle off as kids get older, but not always.
Yeah, I want to add something to that will make you even feel better is that we already have, you know, a group of kids that qualify for free and reduced lunch. Those kids auto-qualify. So the Angel Fund, that fundraising that we did is on top of that. So we have a really good start towards this.
Ray, can I ask a follow-up question? Meaning if you're on free and reduced lunch, we're going to waive the fees, the four dollars? For, we, we're going to waive it for after school?
As we do for all of our programs, all of our school-based programs.
Okay, great.
Other questions?
One more. Where'd we cut, you said that we're going to do it like lunch or whatever, which, where did we come up with four dollars?
Yeah, so we took a look at, we, we, looking at the average number of students that we've kind of seen at, at both schools and then looking at two supervisors and, and what we would pay for two supervisors at each program. We just divided that by the number of school days and that's what it came out to.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much for the report and thank you for the work keeping this important program going.
Thank you for your patience.
No, no worries. That takes us to conference items. Is there any old business? Is there any new business? Okay, do we have any good in welfare this month? All right. May I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel.
And now may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yep.
Yes, the motion carries and we are now adjourned to executive session. Thank you very much.